Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, November 7, 2016. Will you please stand before the pledging leaders? The pledging leaders.
... in the United States of America, and we are the Republic of Oyster Sands. One nation, under God, indivisible,天地一體， without any bounds.
Please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone, once again. Welcome to fall. Apparently, it got chilly out there. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being videotaped by our own Dartmouth High School students under the supervision of Mr. Robert Farady, their television production teacher, for future broadcasts on Dartmouth Community Television, as well as the Dartmouth High School YouTube channel. At this time, if you have cell phones, pagers, electronic devices, please silence them and put them on vibrate, and I will do the same as on speakerphone. Roll call, please.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
And Jenkins.
Here.
Guevar.
Carol Parafotas.
John Newt.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. I did receive, just from my fellow committee members, I did receive an email from Dr. Parafotas stating that she did have some type of medical procedure today, and she was hoping that she was going to be able to get here, but unfortunately, she couldn't have to listen tonight to me. At this time, I am honored to meet you. At this time, we have allotted 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. So if you would like to come up and voice your concern, voice your opinion, just want to talk to us about any of tonight's agenda items, I welcome you to do so at the podium. I'll take that as a no. Thank you, everyone. Next up, I'll entertain motion for the approval of the regular session minutes of October 17, 2016. So.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Noon, second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? Chair here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, let me turn it over. We have a presentation by the YNCA about our before and after-school programs here for Dartmouth Public Schools. So I welcome you up to the podium.
Mr. Chair, this is Samantha Houdin, and I'm Mike Mahoney from the Y. And I have to say before they start that we've met with them a number of times since last year, and I would just like to thank them very much for their partnership with Dartmouth Public Schools. They've been nothing but cooperative and collaborative, and it's something that started this year, and that's because of their efforts to, again, partner with our schools and provide some wonderful programs for a number of our schools. So we thought it would be nice for them to come on and let you know what's happening at our schools.
Excellent. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gibbard. So we just kind of wanted to take a few minutes of your time and let you know what we're doing in the schools and with the schools, and that feeling that you have, Dr. Gibbard, is reciprocal. We certainly appreciate all that the school has done to help us get these programs off the ground and make them available. So we're going to start talking about schooling in just a second. We're also going to cover some of the other things that we do with the school departments, such as the enrichment programs, the field trips, or the team-building stuff that we've done primarily with the middle school, and talk about Camp Atticomment. We have about 500 kids that come to camp each year, so we do often see what we're doing there. And as you look at this infographic right here, there are 709 kids that come to the Dartmouth YNCA annually. About 103 of those take part in enrichment programs, 101 in the licensed school age program, and about 505 in our day camp programs. The YNCA has three areas of focus. The one that we're most concerned about tonight is youth development, and under youth development, we really focus on the social, emotional, cognitive, and physical development of all the children in our programs. So when we look at the curriculum development that we have at the YNCA, and what we're trying to instill, it really focuses around those three points. So I'll turn it over to Sam to talk a little bit about the school age program.
All right. So we do offer school-age childcare at the YNCA, where right now we service about 79 children between our before and after-school program. In this fall, we started a licensed before and after-school program at the Potter School, which has been going really, really well with the support of Mrs. Brooks and Mr. Porter and the great staff that they have up there. In the morning, we start at 7:00 a.m., and we go right into the start of school, where the children have their structured opportunities for activities, as well as they're sort of protected through the school. And then at the Y, we do activities with them, where they can bring their own breakfast, they have homework help. They can come back to us in the afternoon at Potter School, either way at the school or at the Y, that goes until 6:00 p.m. at both places. And they participate in homework help, this collectivity, we do structured activities time with them, based around different content areas. And we also do youth-choice-based clubs, where the kids vote on what kinds of clubs they want. They run an eight-week session. We're just ramping up a drama club and a doobie-booze science club at the YNCA, which has gone really well, so bringing that to Potter School in the next session. And coming December 2016, we'll be opening an after-school program at the middle school, so same kind of setup that's happening at Potter and the YNCA, except at the middle school, where the kids will have use of the different areas of the middle school, the media center, different classrooms. Licensed childcare. We focus on, he's a bad helper. We focus on three main areas in licensed childcare. Really, in all of our programs, we really focus on achievement, relationship building, and belonging with our kids. We really want them to feel like they're a part of something much bigger than just an after-school or a before-school, or even an enrichment program. We really strive to make sure that, for example, when they do youth choice with the clubs, that they feel like they've accomplished something, that they were a part of making a really intentional decision, something that impacted the community. So those were just an idea for you guys to kind of see what our culture is. And then enrichment. So enrichment started long before I started at the Dartmouth Y, but these programs go right from the end of school to 5:00 p.m. They're different than typical enrichment programs in the sense that we try to do a lot of hands-on stuff. It's not as much kind of sitting down and just doing curriculums, a lot of hands-on arts and crafts, activities, science projects. In the past, we've run topics like model rockets, sports skills and drills, cooking with kids. We're currently running recycled parts programs, so we try to keep a broad spectrum of activities open for the kids. Can that be turned on?
So Camp Atticomment is actually the precursor of the YNCA. They really became, the YNCA really started because of Camp Atticomment. As you may know, the facility used to be the Children's Museum for several years, and then when it merged with the YNCA, it evolved into a day camp. So before the fitness equipment and the after-school programming, we were primarily a day camp. So Camp Atticomment has been in existence for almost 16 years now. We service about 250 to 300 kids each day. We have traditional day camps, so swim lessons, archery, all kinds of arts and crafts, sports, active play. We offer specialty camps, and the specialty camps revolve around anything that you can think of, but particularly if you're replacing an emphasis on STEM or STEAM programs with a connect to engineering and building program, as well as the Memphis Rose Camps, where they're going to test the results you could see on the TV show. And we try to do a whole curriculum based on science, which is a pretty cool thing and something that camps are moving to across the country. Y's nationwide service about 1.4 million people in day camps, so for us, it's just a natural fit. And like I said before, most of the children that come to camp are from the Dartmouth service area, so we'll make sure people are aware of what we're doing at camp. And then lastly, we have team-building and field days, and so you see a couple of pictures up there. The top picture is our 4.2 acre farm. It's 100% of the produce that's grown there gets donated back to the community, which is a huge benefit to all of the South Coast of Massachusetts from all over the area. And we have had several second and third grade classes from the district come out and take part in helping us harvest. We've also created an education garden, because we know that kindergarteners might not always be the most careful when around plants, so we've got an area for them to learn about agriculture as well. And it's important in this community, we're a rich community, and agriculture has made up such a huge part of our history, that it's a great add-on or enhancement for any of the classrooms that come out, because we have a curriculum developed that can match up with the line of whatever's going on in the classroom. We also have our leadership and challenge course, so we've got eight elements where we can do some team-building stuff, and depending on how many hours or how many days we have the kids out, they can progress from initiative games on ground to low ropes to high ropes. And in that picture, you see two children belayed on an obstacle that's about 12 to 15 feet from the air, so a real big confidence builder. Over the past several years, we've worked with Pete Rossi in the middle school to bring their eighth graders out over the course of three days to do various things, anything from field games to climbing power to the obstacle course. And of course, we do that at a great discount to the school district, but you guys are in so great touch as opposed to what we do. So we're really excited about the partnership that we have, and we're really excited moving forward, and anything that we can do to help enhance what's going on now, we're happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your cooperation and your collaboration with the Dartmouth school system. Turn it over to any of my colleagues that have any thoughts or...
I didn't realize that it was Apple Choice on there, to be honest with you. I mean, we were there with some of the kids that were involved, but I didn't realize it was that involved and that intense. I'd like to give a congratulations to Phil.
Thank you.
So I am partial, because I sit on the Y board as well, but I think it has been a real collaborative process, and I think Michelle's on the board as well, and Tracy's been involved with some curriculum, doing with the farm. And it's because of the Y's and the response that some of us started out talking about the opportunities for middle school, because we were freaked out because our kids were coming home like 2:30 in the afternoon. And you know, who wants to have an 11-year-old or a 12-year-old at home all alone, unsupervised for four hours? And so I'm really particularly thrilled to see that the middle school program is starting up. I think that's a real need in this community, and there's not a lot of providers, and so to have, and feed their own school, because they're, you know, my kids, they're too cool to go somewhere, but being able to stay at school and, you know, access computers or the media center, that sort of thing, I think is going to be a real plus and help keep some of our kids engaged, who might otherwise not be. So I'm really grateful for a great partnership.
And you said the middle school program's starting in December?
Starting in December, yep. We've been working on that for almost two years now, just to get that off the ground. And what I can say with regard to the middle school and to Potter School is we recognize that there was a gap there, that we didn't have as many of the children coming to us, because we admit that we're not in the most convenient location for parents at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And so there was a gap there, and there was a need that we clearly saw at Potter and that we clearly saw at the middle school, and so we're hoping to fill that need and provide quality care for those children.
I can never say enough about one of the means to collaborate with the YNCA, especially in this area. I think the South Coast Y does a remarkable job, and I think the leadership that they show, not just in our community, but in the greater South Coast community, is something that is modeled in the rest of the state. And I think sometimes, just rather than speaking about the collaboration, in this instance, I'd like to, the Y community often looks to the Y organization not too far away in Foxborough as a goal standard for what they can do. Why should they get to do it because of money that comes from that particular organization in the Foxborough area? Funds that can be discovered. What happens in the South Coast is marvelous, it works with creative people, trusting people with collaboration, taking limited resources and extending them much, much further than the dollars that have been withdrawn. So I commend. Anytime that Dartmouth Public Schools, any school community, town, can reach out and help.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I want to again thank you for your presentation, and look forward to the program starting after the middle school, and for all the work you do with Dartmouth Public Schools. And from my own perspective, I love seeing the whole community garden, that piece that I know our students took out there, including my daughter and my daughters.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, Gibbard, for your work. We're happy to have you. Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, however, we completely understand if you have some other obligations at the Y or family obligations.
Like a new baby. Like a new baby.
Two of you are two.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
You too. This time, we're going to turn it over to our student, Stacy Hartman, for her report.
So since tomorrow is election day, we still have a school-wide off集action, and voting has already gone underway. It's through the students' online email system, and the students are voting on the four matches that are scheduled, which I think is going to pass soon, especially for the students who will actually be voting for really eighteen-year-olds. They're also going to be voting on Congress and the President, the House President. So that's really exciting, and the results will be in at the end of the week tomorrow. You guys are very excited. This weekend, the band is going through a national competition at MetLife Stadium on Saturday, so I want to wish them the best of luck. They've done amazingly every year, playing at the top, so I know they will have great success there. I'd like to say congratulations to the volleyball team and the girls soccer team on amazing seasons in the playoffs, and best of luck to the volleyball team, they're actually playing right now at VoT, and the boys soccer team as they advance in the playoffs. Last but not least, there is going to be a PBIS fundraiser at the Foster House on November 16th and 17th. That's next Wednesday and Thursday. And in order for partners to go towards the PBIS program, whoever comes needs to print out the flyer, which is on the Dartmouth School Board website, or you can just show it on your phone. So all proceeds are donated to this program to award students for a quality of year.
Excellent. Glad to see that. Anything else? How's the school year going? Okay?
Going well.
Is that volleyball game still on for the 22nd? There was something that was going to happen on the 22nd?
Oh, yes, yes. On the 22nd, there's a volleyball tournament that National Honor Society is putting on, and so we're getting a lot of the, the police departments, the fire departments involved. There's teacher teams as well as student teams, and we'll be selling tickets there, but I think the National Honor Society will be presenting at the next meeting. Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, well. So could they perhaps, they were, they were going to present on the 21st, the Honor Society about their volleyball tournament. Is there any way that we could potentially allow them to come into the joint meeting for like two minutes? There probably would be a bigger audience if all of the boards are together, and just at least announce it? Could we ask?
Sure. I don't have a lot of questions.
Yeah, so maybe we can ask. I agree. What day is that?
That's a Wednesday.
Yeah, Monday.
I don't see why not.
Just reminding each other we don't forget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First of all, we're on the subject of things at high school, and some of the products, and I noticed that there have been some significant developments in issues related to athletic programs, money, and that.
Yes.
And I wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea for us to schedule some time with the athletic director in the near future to look at how people are seeing those things, how that might impact high school and the student environment.
We can see if you get an idea on that. All right, next up, we have a consent agenda. First up is the proposed 2017 Unified Arts Trip to Ireland. You should have received the application in your school committee packets with Dr. Gibbard or, what did I think, the opponent? Or we have a description here, so...
Yeah, in the audience.
Come on down.
Answer any of your questions or...
Good evening, ladies.
Thank you for having us. So would you like me to present?
Absolutely.
Sure. So we're proposing to do a trip. We had, if you don't know, we're needing, you know, pending approval with parents and students, and it's primarily advanced placement art photo students that would be participating on the trip, and we had a huge parent interest. It's almost every student has a mom or a mom that wants to go. So we were planning probably 20 people. We booked preliminarily 30, but 20 that were pretty definite, and we're going to go to both Southern Ireland and Northern Ireland. And we leave on Friday of 14th, which begins vacation, Good Friday, with a heat and flight, and we return on, is it August? We return on Saturday, so you have a little bit of a preparation plan, so everyone will be at school on Monday. So we're using a tour group, CID, it's an Irish-based, it's in this country, but the tour guides are Ireland. Firstly, my husband and I took our two daughters and used this tour group, not this past summer, the summer before, and it was great. It was so educational, history-based, they were very professional, the lodging was wonderful, food, everything, a very good experience. So everything's really worked out, and as far as with what we would do, Dublin, start in Dublin on day two, see Dublin Castle, have some time in the city, and then, as you can see, we'll hear St. Patrick's grave and the Ulster Folk Museum, and then we'd go more up to Northern Ireland to see, in Belfast, the Technic Museum, we're walking toward Belfast, and then Giant's Causeway in Countryside, with a focus on photography, of course, and Donaghell Castle in Westport, then also Westport House and Sheep Farm, and then end at the Close of War, and with a medieval banquet, and then stay at the Purnrey Castle. So like you have your private tour director, seven nights, hotel, breakfast each day, dinner, most dinners are included except for two, and all the different tours and initiatives to museums are included, at a price that could fluctuate with flights, closer you get, the flights could go up. We're also planning some fundraisers with the kids, shooting ideas around, first things first, once we've, if we can foresee a football, we're forward with that, to help kids that need some funding to help them pay for the trip.
That was my biggest concern, my only caveat that I see with it is that the cost of $2,750 is a lot of money for some folks, and you know, I know that would be a strain on individuals, so you, with that sort of fundraising, would be going towards trying to defray some of the foster.
Yes, yes. So we were proposing a picnic night for dinner, because Sue and I just attended one, which was well-received. Also, maybe some kind of dinner. Oh, a paint night, too. I didn't know that they do a paint night at the Clines of Lland, but we all do painting, and you know, the kids could be directly involved in that with instruction, so that's what we're looking to do. We're excited about that. Also, we could do sales, you know, I teach a metals class, we can do jewelry, it's just timely, it's time of year to make sales, and we were proposing a calendar, I think you keep students focused, create a calendar. And that way, you can really keep track of who sells what, so the kids are more motivated and so forth, and they can get, you know, a percentage of the sales side. So all those things are being worked out.
I want to suggest, Mr. Guevar.
Just a brainstorm. As it is a photography-based trip, and having been to Ireland, I can, they will be confident they're going to come back with some amazing photos. What if we work collaboratively together, come up with some sort of a new thing, where in addition to not just the stylistic and technical portion of photography, we also were talking about the career photography, specifically freelancing, where we arrange ahead of time to have students come back and sell some of the better photos that they got, which in, you know, a museum-type atmosphere might generate significantly more relevance than perhaps one of the fundraising that we had.
Like an opening for sales, like a gallery opening?
Right.
We were actually planning with that to do a show, because it would be probably included in the art show. You know, this work would be included in the AP portfolio, which goes out in the bank with the same as the main. So that would be, that would be a wonderful idea. And we had, it's funny, we had Peter Pereira payment to talk to the classes, and this is when we were working this out, and we had the parents and the kids both voted, we were looking at Scotland, Japan, so we asked Peter, where would you go? And he's a photo journalist, he said, oh, I'd go to Ireland for the second, because I'm more interested in pictures than scenery. So there are different perspectives, you know, as a career. He did a great time, and he, some of the kids, you know, changing their intended nature of schedules and, you know, following your heart with what you love and whatnot.
Any notes?
Steven, what's to come?
I've already, it's already expressed.
I'm on, I'm on board. Carry luggage, get guided to it. I just spent, I was there last, not this past, I was there for two weeks, because I was going through the summer of the weekend, and it was like, you've been there, been there, been there. You know, it's, where you're going is just absolutely fantastic. You are going to, you know, and when I look at the causeway, it's like, well, hopefully we're there in rain, but, you know, but, you know, fantastic scenery, the cliffs of water, you know, just don't go to the edge, you know, on those type of days, but they're fantastic, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Well, if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion. So.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? Chair here, none, all in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. It does need fundraising. Think we have a big time ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the consent agenda is the Potter School PTO fundraising activities for the 2016-2017 school year. You should have received that as an attachment in your packets. Entertain any discussion, any questions that you have this time. And we have Mrs. Brooks here in the audience, who can, if I have any questions. If you will.
Second.
On the motion by Mr. Noon, the second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
So the increase in cultural events, I'm going to look at this, Brooks, is from, what, $1,700 to $5,000. I assume that means you're holding additional events, so maybe if you just talk about it and pre-advertise it for that.
Which one on the spot, Mrs. Brooks?
All right. We typically in the past put aside $5,000, and then last year, there were some events that we did not hold.
Okay.
So $5,000 is our typical budget.
So you're just going back up.
We're just going back up.
Okay.
So today, we actually held an event, the STEAM Museum, which was great fun, which in and of itself was $1,500.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I press this?
Mr. Guevar, I just, I don't think we ever let one of these funds, your requests, go by without pointing out that everything that this money is going for are things that are not extra in the curriculum, they're essential to the curriculum in many cases. These are things that ideally we'd be paying for out of budget that we have, in a shape that we have to go and sell, and sometimes provide things that are part of our central program, not extras. These are things that we need, you know, summer reading is an essential part of education, and in order to be equitable to communities, because we've got about the books, it would be nice if we didn't take that from the town's contribution, but instead, we have to wait on that, so that's on there.
And I think I, you know, I can speak for all the administrators in that, that without our dedicated PTO, raising the fund to offset all the activities that the children enjoy and really become a part of the memory of their school life, we wouldn't have that. So we thank our PTOs.
I would agree. We have all the PTOs who are working, parents, staff, members to come together for...
And they ensure that no child looks up. Everyone gets to go on a field trip, or everyone gets to see the STEAM Museum today. We couldn't do the job without them.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. No, 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 Mr. Kylie, I'm just curious, can you come up with a figure, maybe, of some way? I'd like to know how much all our groups are doing fundraising each year, to, just to put, to put that into perspective for the, for the town. I would be curious, whether it's at a joint meeting or another meeting that our parent groups, you know, are fundraising.
Of course, they're quarter of a million.
Right. A lot of money. So I'd just be curious. Thank you. Any other discussion? Chair here, none, all in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries. Next up, you should have received in your packet, Dartmouth Public Schools PTO funding for press activities for the 2016-2017 school year. Do we have any questions? Do we have anyone? So I have a motion... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to the end. Next up, I want to turn it over to our superintendent schools, Dr. Gifford, to go with you, continue our conversation on the superintendent evaluation timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so you have a draft timeline for the process for this year, and as I said in my email, I need some help with those dates, think, see what you think is an efficient timeline, so we'll go with that. You also received the three smart goals that we've crafted for this year, I did meet with subcommittee, which included the chair and Dr. Jenkins, and we kind of crafted these and edited them, so I'd just like to articulate those out loud for our folks. So we have a district improvement goal about, relative to supporting the implementation of the district's strategic plan, of course, so one of the things we're going to be doing is to form a committee, that we don't, I can't stand continuing to say committees, but a group that would, folks from each school to be able to come together maybe three times or so, to report to the larger group what's happening in our schools according to our SIPs, and how are our SIPs aligning with the strategic plan, and then be able to report to the school committee a couple of times, once towards the middle of the year or so, and are we meeting some of our benchmarks, and how are we doing with our strategic objectives. So that's our district improvement goal, the professional practice goal that I gave you is about, once again, collaborating with the leadership team to continue our work around educational evaluation, as you remember, last year we had a lot of work we did with our consultant, and we're gonna continue some of that work, doing some joint observations, we've done some work already in our district leadership team about crafting our observation feedback, with the CEIJ format, and so we'll be continuing that work, critiquing each other's work, et cetera, bringing some write-ups, so that's our professional, my professional practice goal, and then our student learning goal, as we talked about, actually, Ms. Roy, Ms. Olivera and I have collaborated on a team goal, and we are proposing to work with our math team at our high school specifically, we do wanna pull in some of our middle school as well to get that vertical alignment, but that will be planning for some professional development, so work on our curriculum alignment, et cetera, some instructional strategies, so we've already met with the math team at the high school, actually, Michelle and Tracy met with them a number of times, and then we met as a team, well, the last weekend, we'll be meeting again this week, and we'll be bringing, one of the things we're doing is UMass Dartmouth, partnering with them, to do some PD with those, et cetera. So as you know, from the entry plan last year, our math, we just wanna improve and strengthen what we're doing around math, throughout the district, and we're honing in right now, because you always wanna be specific with your goals, right now we're in math with our high school, and a little bit of that vertical line with our middle school. So those are our three goals, well, my three goals, that's a team goal, that one, so I would take any comments on that, and then we can look at the draft timeline, which isn't much different from last year, but just about when you think with the meetings, we would be doing mid-cycles, et cetera.
Let's start with Mr. Noon's?
Yeah, no, I'm very happy with the, with the goal, with what's been presented, I see issues we have, as far as the timeline, it looks good, we just got a couple of things we got, yeah, we can label it, but I think that timeline works well.
Any other things, Mr. Gar?
No, I concur with Mr. Noon, I think, you know, he intends to make good progress on the goals from last year, and wanted to select for this year, and align with the needs of the district, and wanted to partner, so it's a thought, so I'd be very comfortable.
I'm good, I was on the, yeah, you should be right, because it reflects, like, whatever you say.
Dr. Jenkins and I have already been over this, so, like Dr. Jenkins said, I have, you know, no qualms about it, any concerns I have are brought to the committee, you know, I think the one piece, you know, that maybe you just looked at is the mid-cycle, I think, I think January ninth should be, should be okay, you think that's?
I think so.
Okay.
We probably won't have a whole lot to talk about, at least it's a mid-cycle, because I'd rather have early than we make adjustments as we go.
Agreed.
Or at least you hear what's happening.
I think early, I think earlier personally is better.
Yeah, and as we recall from last year, and our training with, or the professor on the mid-cycle is, and all discussion about where the committee, those things are going, et cetera, you don't have to do any write-ups, you don't have to.
Fair enough.
So if we continue around this timeline, just looking at the individual, as I said, to the chair at the end of May, with the formal evaluations, the write-ups, and the summative, I think that's about what we were last year. We have not set a June meeting yet, so I kind of just threw that in the meeting, and we can finalize things then if that's, I think, and I know last year we just did this a little bit as time went on, but at least we have a general idea.
Something to go by.
Yeah, so it's, I would take the committee would approve the halls and the media.
Absolutely, no question. Second. Motion by Mr. Gar, second by Mr. Noon, on the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, thank you.
The votes are approved.
Thank you.
And we continue, under new business, school committee policy update, canine therapy assistance first reading, you should have received that attachment in your packets. Ms. Roy, you talking about that?
Sure, subcommittee met in October, before Mrs. DeCampus's presentation, our last review, and so we met in anticipation of that, and we looked at the animals in school current policy, to see where it needed to be adjusted. So we already had a section on the bottom page one, referencing marrying animals, with the astronauts on the dogs, is already in our current policy. So what we did at that point was look at adding to the exception, so if we flip over on the second page or third exception, this was already in our policy, we had guide carrying other service dogs or warm fostering dogs, so we added registered canine-assisted therapy dogs, so that's the change we made to those first two pages, and so it's right at the top third of page two. Then in the policy, there's already a component explaining what a service animal was, that was already in the policy, so the committee asked that I develop a similar piece for therapy dogs, what a therapy dog is. So the first paragraph explains a little bit about Mrs. DeCampus presented, Dr. Penne Fitz, and then it defines the different types, so you can see on bottom page three, we have animal assisted activities, usually referred to as AAA, animal assisted interactions, which are AAI, these are non-holdover interactions, where the specific content of visit is meant to provide motivational, educational, and he has a problem with that. What she's proposing is more of the second component, the animal assisted therapy, which is goal intervention, and then Mrs. DeCampus's, she's occupational therapies, etc., so these would be where a student may be brushing a dog, or the dog may have something on it, or a student may bathe it, and so on. So the last piece was already in the policy, that last paragraph, which says, the superintendent school or his or her designated shall be responsible for developing procedures that go along with this, so what I provided for you, conditions in the policy, which you don't have to vote decision by law, so you get a sense of what the guidelines would look like. So the guidelines lay out the training that's required, the health and vaccination that's required, the licensing, the insurance, the identification that's required for the handler, the therapy dog, what is included under the control of me as far as the lack of leash, the supervision of the therapy dog, the areas, allergies, record-keeping, the fact that new fees charged, that all dogs need to be registered and on-site, damages, exclusion, and then a proposed, what we're working on for a request, which has to be handled, which would go through the approval policy, approval of the superintendents, having them request all of what's required and what it is. So that's, that was provided, just so you get a sense of what that last paragraph references as far as the guidelines.
Okay.
So what we did to the policy again, on the bottom of page one, there was already the ask for the dogs, we added the exception, which was already there for the guide in hearing, so the samples may not be registered, A nine assisted, and then the very end, just a description of what, what is needed. So this is a first reading, have any questions, Mrs. DeCampus is here, hands on hand, or any suggestions?
How this question concerns, I think this was very well together, the addition of the policy.
So I'd just make one suggestion on the form, the request form, is that perhaps we add an area where we outline any conditions, like we talked about, if you go into a school that you might say, we only want it to come in through this entrance, and to be in this area, and so that way, I found with my interactions with students, it wasn't that everyone's on the same page, because sometimes you have verbal interactions, and people misunderstand, whereas if all those sort of conditions about maybe where the dog will go or whatever are written, and then everyone signs to it, it's clear that everyone's on the same page. So, so you're saying, like, this is, this is the handler, this is what the handler's filling out, that maybe on the back there might be something that's from the school or the principal's perspective, this is where the dog's gonna go, you know, please don't go here, this or that, so that's very clear, clearly spelled out to the handler as well, and they know what sort of their obligations are, and where they should be.
So the principal, doesn't mean it's providing feedback to the owner.
Yeah, and so that, just that person knows, right, and they have a point of reference, like, if you end up going to four schools, and you're like, wait, what, what door do I go in at Quinn, where do I go in at Potter, you can pull out your piece of paper, and that's all written down about how that should operate, and then we have a record of it.
Mr. Noon's?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would think that they're going with the remaining, it's the thing, but going to the site, so that.
Right, but there may be places they may not be, they should not go, because.
Well, not so much where they're not going to go, but their entrance to the building.
But whatever, those conditions about where they should go or not go should be written down, so everyone that's a party to the agreement can understand what those conditions are.
Mr. Gar?
I think the part that troubles me the most about this, and it stems a little bit from what Dr. Jenkins's point is, and I think Dr. Gifford's point is a good one, the second to the last paragraph in the policy says, the therapy dog is the personal property of the handler, and is not the property of the school district, and then it goes on to who has full responsibility to the dog while it's there. Full responsibility, errors with it, some obvious issues in our position of society, should something go wrong, I think Dr. Jenkins's point is a good one, my question is, how reliable is that language for something where it goes wrong, and what is the liability that we're setting up the district for, especially if we water down the responsibility for the dog while it's in the school, with restrictions that would be different from one school to another, that will not be set by the superintendent, may be set by the local principal, and so on and so forth, and so I would hope that before we take this on again, that there is some greater conversation about exactly where the limits of responsibility and liability are when you bring an animal into the building, and it's, in my mind, it is questionable about who's responsible for it.
I just want to call off and say, that's not what my concerns were, they are, right, I just want everyone to make sure we're all on the same page, and I found that when we have these conversations, that writing them down are clear, I'm not particularly concerned about liability, and so I don't want that to be sort of attributed, and I have any opposition to this policy, because I am in support of it.
Right, no, I have no opposition to the policy, I think, what you said, providing some type of feedback on the other side from the local principal to the handler, whereas with a dog, yeah, I think that's probably feasible. The liability, I guess it can't hurt, can maybe have a conversation with Walter.
Yeah, because we do have clause about insurance.
I did notice that the insurance isn't in the liability, so I'm pretty comfortable with liability, but the sacred, Mr. Gar's question, could you produce some clarification a little? Anything else? So we're all on the same page that this comes back for a second reading, that I'd like to see just something in addition that Sholm is speaking about himself, about, you know, the backside of the forum, about some information from the local, they're still looking for it.
Yes, good.
Very welcome, perfect. Thank you very much, thank you for coming out again. Next up, FY18 budget timeline, turn it over to Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, so we have before you a projected timeline, there's some, some dates in there that are to be determined based on future school committee meetings and other events in the community, but generally speaking, the timeline's fairly consistent with what we've done in recent years, it's an aggressive timeline for sure, but it's one that I think will work well, allow us some time to collaborate, first internally, and the budget subcommittee, and then on to the town stage. So I think that some of the limitations of this timeline, we've talked about in the past, but are that the state budget projections, and the, we'll have governor's numbers, but we won't have much else during the bulk of this process, so that is somewhat limiting, but it does get us hopefully to a point where we can work with the town side of government prior to town meeting, and it will square away. So we're looking forward to doing it all over again.
Seems like we just.
Actually, we're doing, starting again.
So I'd be happy to entertain any questions might have, or comments.
Mr. Noon's?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I share quite concerns with Mr. Kylie, in regards to the timeline here, in the sense that all we're gonna have is.
..................................................................................................................................................................
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Gar, and I think that last year, we spent a fair amount of time doing that with the school committee, sub, budget subcommittee, and kind of laying the groundwork of where we were gonna be going with this, and what things like collective marketing, and some other back-do's contracts, that were expiring, what roles that that played into our, our planning process, so we certainly will continue to do that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, school starts line, so one of the last meetings that we have, we kind of briefly spoke about, starting to do some research into the start times of our elementary, middle, high school students, and Mr. Noon's had the opportunity to attend a regional, I guess you could call it a task force, of the partnership with the Fallow College Schools, and he's gonna be reporting out tonight as to what kind of information was discussed, so I will turn it over to Mr. Noon's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, went down to Fallow High School. night, and what you have that's been given to you is the PowerPoint presentation that the Fowlip Superintendent's School District has put together. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, you know, it's all here as to what they've been looking at and such for you, but there were six districts that were there that night. Fowlip, of course, they have the Barnes-Stable, Mashpee, Plymouth, Situate, and us, type of deal. When you look at this printout, you're going to see a timeline from Fowlip, excuse me, for like a vote of the school committee in May of 2017. The reason that vote is scheduled at that point in time is that they're planning on having all the work done at that point. Their elections are in May, and there could be three members on their committee, so this way, this work is not, Fowlip is not going to implement this if they implement it until 2018, September of 2018. Barnes-Stable is looking at this, they've hired a consultant, so to do some research and supplement some data on it. Mashpee is there, they're going full bore, in the sense that they're going through all of this and they're going, they're looking to try to start this out in September of 2017, type of deal. Of course, we're just in, as I said to them, we're just literally starting to talk about it, type of deal. The town of Plymouth is just looking at it, again, they're just starting the process. And the two people that were there from Situate didn't say anything, you know, close the cars or anything of that nature. It was an excellent evening of information. There were a lot of things that came out. Bus transportation was a big thing. Do you need to put more buses on if anyone, the way out of the school, that type of deal. Of course, that becomes a town expense versus private school spending, so there was a lot of discussion there. If you moved high school to start later, did you move the elementaries back? Now, at this point in time, you have, you know, elementary students standing on a bus, you know, standing at a bus stop at quarter seven in the morning in pitch black, especially as, you know, the timing has changed now, with the lights back, the clock's being turned back. Someone brought up, the coaches, would they be available? Because if you have coaches in elementary and or high school, you know, are they available to still be able to coach with the latest start time, type of deal? One of the things I mentioned, and nobody had thought about, which was interesting, is it's not too bad in, you know, September and the beginning of October, you know, if the high school got out at 3:30 for practicing, for practice, you know, it's still light up, but you know, if they got out at 3:30, now they've got roughly 45 minutes before it's going to be pitch black. And, you know, if you don't have the facilities with lights that they can practice at, you know, there's an issue there. Somebody talked about, well, maybe you move the practices the first thing in the morning, type of deal. Well, that defeats the whole purpose of students, you know, being able to get an extra hour of sleep, you know? The thing, the key was, you know, the other thing that came out was, okay, so we moved, for discussion purposes, we moved the high school apartment, I said this time, just as a discussion, okay? Well, you're still able to get your child to bed at 10 o'clock, or the child say, "Well, I don't have to be up, I can sleep an hour later in the morning, so I don't have to go to bed till 11 o'clock." You know, so there's a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of things in the mix, you know, a lot of options that have to come in, you know, students with jobs, things of that nature. I think one of the best things that was in there, and it's in your packet, there was a graph about student bedtimes, you know? They polled the students as to what time did you go to bed? And another one, they polled the parents, what time does your child go to bed? And they're in the mix. You know, they weren't there at all, you know, as, you know, some of the parents said, you know, "Well, Johnny or Suzie goes to bed at 9:30," but you know, at 10:30, we're still here and walking around, because they're reading, they've got a TV, they've got their computer, and they've got all this stuff. They're still doing things instead of trying to sleep, so. It was a, again, I'd like to thank Fowlip for taking a read of this, and it was a very enjoyable and learned experience that night.
Well, thank you for attending. Appreciate it. Did anyone bring up any schools in the area that have already made the change?
No, no one brought that up.
I would be curious, do we know of any school districts?
I think, I thought that Nauset came in.
All of the Nauset that's been doing it for years.
Nauset, yeah, and then, you know, they did say that they were...
They're pretty much, they're one of the only ones that have made the change.
And there are other school districts up near Boston, yeah, in that arc area.
They did it, they did it as a collaborative thing amongst several communities, share some of the same concerns, and yeah.
Well, I'd be curious, I would love to have a conversation with these school districts that have made the change, number one. Before I leave and entertain doing that, I would like to hear what the vision of the committee is as to how you would let their, if, and how you would let their pursuit, considering time change.
If I may, I think Mr. News points out remarkably well, that this is a very complicated issue, that when you begin talking about it, there are people from all sides, and then sometimes on opposite sides at the same time, the issue is very emotional, it's very difficult, and there are some ways to make it go very badly, very quickly.
So you're against it?
I'm not against having the conversation, but like, one of the things that I would like to perhaps talk about before we talk about a universal change, or sort of an enormous change, would be to talk about perhaps a way to close the gap between the high school and middle school starting at 9:00. If we could close that gap to 60 minutes, that seems a project, the high schools start at 7:30, and the elementary starting at 7:50.
He said middle school.
Sorry, high school and middle starting at 7:30, and the elementary starting at 7:40. If we could talk about shrinking that gap, that might be something that's good in the real house, a lot of news, right? It might be something that we could talk about, and perhaps not about a revolutionary change to start times, but perhaps we could talk about a revolutionary change to transportation. And that might give us a compromise solution to what I think we all recognize is a real problem, you know, one that perhaps better suits and likely outcomes if that was, no matter what you... And then John's, the research does show, John's point, if you move the start time, you pay an hour, kids should stay up there.
How's it going?
Kids stay up later because their bodies are biologically not programmed to fall asleep at 10 o'clock. It is science, right? The melatonin in teenagers' bodies does not start to peak until around 11 o'clock. So you can tell them to go to bed at 10 o'clock for all you want, but they are fighting basic biology. I wish Viera was here, she might be able to back me up on that one. And that is, I think, the real issue here. I understand this is really, really complicated, but to me, the number one priority in any decision we have to make is about our kids' academic and social, emotional well-being. And the research about start times is overwhelming. It's overwhelming, right? This is positive for their academic achievement, it is positive for their social, emotional well-being. And to me, that's got to be, I understand, like, my kids play sports, it's going to make it hard. I'd rather sports be hard than school be hard, right? I understand that kids need to work, right? I'd rather work be hard than school be hard. I feel really strongly about it, and I know we have to do this carefully, but I really would like to see the district move forward on this. This is a particular challenge for us because we're so big physically, and I know it's problematic having young kids go out to the bus late, but some of those high school kids are getting the bus at like 6:10, I think, Mr. Kylie, up north.
Right.
They got to get up before 6 o'clock. Their bodies literally do not work that way. And we've got to set up a school system that works for our kids, and that's got to be our number, that's my number one priority. And so I do, we have to do this carefully, but I really would like to move forward on this conversation, because I think it's important. I always joke, I would start these important conversations, and then my kids graduate and we implement them, which is what will happen here, and free full-day kindergarten, year after my kids get out of kindergarten. I'm confident that this will be, if we get this forward, it'll be right after my youngest graduate from high school. But I'm not only motivated by what's good for me and my sleep and my kids, but what's good for all the kids in the first grade.
Thank you, Bill. Let's hear from our high school, Rob.
So I kind of agreed with Mr. News when he said that you'd stay up hours later, because it's starting an hour later. Because I know that personally I would do that, just because I know I'd have more sleep. But then the other point here is, if you're getting home an hour later or two hours later, you have less time to do homework as well, or like less time to have a job. So I see that aspect of it, and I don't know how that can be remedied, but I do think that teens might be beginning to lose sleep, and there is a bit knowledge about that. I know, I remember, she's always up at least an hour before me, and she's always in bed an hour before me, and that's just by watching the kids. I don't know how I know.
All right.
I kind of don't know.
Fair enough.
But I know that if there is a change, I don't think it should be too drastic, maybe an hour.
Dr. Gifford, what do you think?
I just want to say that, you know, I was in Nauset when we did this flip in a number of years, and interesting enough, the elementary schools go like at 7:30 in the morning. So all the elementaries are really early, Mr. Potts are ready to go at 7:30. This is principal of thought. But anyway, but the statistics were very clear, once the switch was made in middle and high school, especially the high school, actually Nauset is the latest starting middle school in the state, around nine or so. The number of absentees, the number of tardies, and the number of failures for first lot classes completely decreased, because kids were now ready to learn. So the data was really drastic as far as the good stuff. Having started the conversation in Fowlip there, and we did all the research, we, just so FYI, if we were to continue the conversation, the way we did it was partner up with Barnes-Stable to do two community event, community information sessions, so that we weren't there to just make the change, obviously immediately, but to bring out the stuff that we knew would be an issue, older kids being at home to babysit, sports, et cetera, et cetera. And then take all the questions, all the venting, all the information, to try to then find ways to solve each one of those with any kind of a ship. And of course, having the transportation, come up with the different scenarios, if there were added buses to accommodate, if there weren't, how long the routes might be, you know, one of the things sometimes that committees don't want is over a 45-minute drive on the bus, et cetera. So there's a way to start the conversation, include the community, and just hear what all the different problems might be from the students. And the stakes is that sometimes it doesn't have to be a complete flip, but it could be a half an hour move or so, and then I kind of like that idea of looking, is there a way to move the start to middle high a little later, but yet condense the elementary a tiny bit, so they're not going that much. So, but of course, that's looking at bus routes, et cetera.
Mr. Garth, you know, one of the things that is about the community conversation, it needs to include the people who are going to be part of the solution, daycare facilities, employers, and, you know, the police, and the, and all of those kinds of things, because they ultimately have to be part of the building to work with, you know, what's happening. And the other part that needs to be there is the cooperation of Fairhaven, and Westport, and Bedford, and Pusher, because there are things that affect families that cross those lines, and it's much more significant than you think.
Mr. News.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, one of the things that Jacob's talked about, they did spend a lot of time talking about social, you know, emotions of the student. Again, if we look at this, they put a big task force together as to bring in, you know, anybody and everybody, to the point that they also run a local pediatrician to work with them and such. They're not jumping into this, they're trying to do things in a systematic way. Everyone was in total agreement that whatever you make, if you make this, whatever you do, you're going to have people that are going to be happy and people that are not. You're not going to please everyone. And like what Jacob did, just trying to make the best decision, conform the decisions through the information that you have.
Agreed. So what I'm hearing is that the committee, I think, would like to proceed slowly, looking at continuing some research, and then taking whatever next step that might be, Dr. Gifford, whether it's getting some community groups together, putting it out there, having some discussions, and with those people involved, I would leave that up to you as a car, that's that next step. But I do think we're all on the same page in which we would like cautiously proceed with researching and better understanding how this will affect the students, the parents, all the stakeholders.
I wonder, you know, if we think out of the South or if Sincon would be appropriate. And they were looking at solutions a year ago for some of the distressed properties in the city. They had one group look at some general policies, they had another group look at some very specific solutions. I wonder if, well, you know, the superintendent is trying to work to build community consensus around something, if there isn't a way to look at our existing systems and what can we tweak, and just what can we do internally to try to cover some of those, and then, you know, bring those things back together, which may be, you know, totally opposition to one another, but it may be more in concert than we think, and we may have a fix that's closer to our...
So you're suggesting, our committee?
Or, you know, or sort, you know, not so much a subcommittee, but you know, if the district went in two different approaches, maybe Dr. Clifford went in one district and Mr. Kylie and Principal one of Clifford.
Well, we'd like to, you know, continue this conversation, you know, maybe next month, and there's really no timeline on it, but just, I'd like to, the next month and maybe next month, month after, it's the next step. It's the next step. Because I think we're all in agreement that something's, whether it's small or big. Next up, topics for discussion for our joint meeting with the select board on November 14th, 2016. I think I will turn this over to Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So we have several things that Gifford and I met with Mr. Pressman to discuss this joint meeting, and there are some things on the agenda that we just wanted to bring forward to you folks, so that we can have some discussion and let you know that, why they're on the agenda, I guess. So full-day kindergarten stabilization account, as you know, we've contributed $300,000 to this stabilization account for the years. We did not make a contribution this past year. We, the agreement says that if we have money, we'll make a contribution. But the reality of the stabilization of counties that it's probably inevitably used for what its intended purpose was, so that leaves us with some decision that at some point needs to be made. We had some discussion last year about this, we didn't have one of the joint meetings, and we just kind of left it alone, which we could continue to do, and just leave it there. Or we could look at options to discontinue it, use it for something else, all of which would require, you know, they require a town meeting mode at some point, everything. But we, you know, one of the things that came up that we didn't have, we mentioned already as well, is we have a defined need recently. This is pretty close, you know, fairly close to the original purpose of kindergarten stabilization, so that would be part of the discussion, and how we could, you know, how we could use those funds in a way that would expand the program, which is exactly what we did when we stopped at first, which was expand the program, so.
I like that idea.
Topic for discussion, perhaps, at the joint meeting.
As a reminder, we add the K class this year at our Christian school, and we're at our next level there, even with the addition of class. So we discussed this morning, and knowing that we have the joint, we look for, maybe to think about the idea of using that for a pre-K, up at the, you know, for our...
look for, maybe to think about that idea of using that for pre-K, upper, you know, power tool, whether it's putting modules on, to house our students, but any additional support we can give to pre-K students just helps our K classes.
Right.
It provides our students with that, you know, beginning education, it's all learning, it's all thoroughly ed. Um, so we're, we, we think that's a priority. We'd really like to see, as you said tonight, add some K pre-K classes. So if this, if there's something we can do, so we're putting out the committees here, um, as we go forward with the joint meeting, see.
And if I could just add into that, that, um, Ms. Roy brought up this morning, that, uh, you know, we're really looking at, the, the town in general has always been opposed to using the one-time monies for recurring expenditures, and we've had that discussion many times. These are certainly monies, um, you know, that were put away. There are potentially, depending on how this was to, to move forward, and how community vision preschool, be some one-time expenditures that, um, you know, would be consistent with that. Might, it may be a good...
Next? Okay.
So the facilities master plan, so we were, um, fortunate enough that the town supported our articles in capital improvement plan at the last town meeting, um, and one of the articles was for a master plan. So we want to get this rolling. Um, I'm in the process, I've got some sample RFP stuff that I'm working on, um, to write or design it, but, um, some of the things that we wanted to look at, Mr. Cressman asked if you put on the joint committee agenda, um, I think, I think the thought is to have some town input on, um, in that process. So it's something that maybe we should talk about first, hopefully envision. Some of the things that, that I want to get out of it is really have them focus on a couple of things. Capacity enrollment, development potential in the town, and some recent work has been done on the development side, and I've received today actually, um, from a planning office, some, some good information about building parcels, it's hot off the presses. Uh, looking at our educational programming, so that includes something like youth program programming, amongst other things. Looking at the existing facility infrastructure and what we would need based on that programming and enrollment and development, and then creating some short and long-term plans, um, that would help drive our capital improvement process on a kind of bigger scale, because we've done a lot with capital improvements. However, we haven't done a lot of big, I mean, hey, four million dollar roof is big, but it's not looking at the future, it's, it's, you know, it's replacing.
It's time we look at our buildings. I know people do not want to hear that, because that usually involves increases in taxes, but however, it's time we need to look to the future, look at our investment, which is the children in this town, and let's, you know, long-term, what are we going to do?
The last, the last study that was done, uh, of school facilities, formal study was in nineteen ninety-five or something like that. Um, so it's been a while, but we still have most of the same buildings, except one, but it was a major factor in moving forward the, the one building.
It's also, you know, at this point, a requirement for us to do any significant business with the MSPCA, you know, MSBA with the, the builders themselves. They, you know, indicated to us in the past that they'd be very willing to work with us on our long-term solution, but that's ingredient number one.
It is, it is, and they ask us about that, and I always say, yes, we have a long-term plan. Well, we have a plan. It's our capital improvement plan, it's a quite new plan, and I explained the process, and that's great. It's great when we're going for a roof or something like that, but it's not going to be, you know, what we, you know, gradually need to address the facilities and so forth. Um, so, uh, on that note, I think, again, I think that the intention is probably, that the fact that this is on the joint agenda, maybe not only to have me explain what we just talked about now, but also to talk about how that process is going to help, what input and groups of talent.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to be a part of the group, obviously, chair of the school committee, and I don't know how everyone else in the community feels as far as such a stakeholder that could or would, would be part of the master planning, really, committee. So before we move on to the joint meeting, and have this discussion, any thoughts or opinions on getting other stakeholders involved at this level, or do you feel that, you know, the facility master plan, the school property, and which you agree with, or...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, it's a, this is a double-edged sword, I think, because it's for us, but it's also going to be part of the town.
Agreed.
So I, I think, uh, to have school-powered personnel, and, uh, someone maybe from the finance committee, and the board selected, or the designated, I think, you know. Maybe you want to get the town planner, just because of what's out there, and, you know, what could we build where, uh, and, and/or maybe the building inspector, or associate building inspector, just so that as we start to formulate things, uh, you know, we know what they have to look like, and, you know, what rules and regulations we have to follow building-wise, building code-wise, things of that nature.
I agree. I, I think in order for...
I'm not, I'm not trying to make this, you know, fifty percent committee.
More convoluted, right, or...
You know, I mean, I, I envisioned, you know, seven, eight, nine people, maybe type of deal.
But in all, let's think about it, in order for the master plan to ever become a fruition, you know, as far as the physical, stick buildings going up or being renovated, I think we need to have other people involved, and we need to have, not saying everyone, like you said, but key, key people from the town involved, to, you know, create buy-in, and also assist with, you know, best areas or the transit towns. Dr. Gifford?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, we have to have other people at the table, but it is our plan, and so the majority of the members ought to be from the school commission, so because it is our plan, and so we, we ought to have the, the vote, but, so I worry that as we, now we're starting to get really big, because John, and I agree, all those people are good, but we got five or six, well, now we've got to have a majority, so now we're up to like thirteen to fifteen, so I don't think we have that. So I think those are all interested, ought to be represented, but I think we need to maybe slice it more narrowly a little bit to start, because I do think we should be on the school side driving the process and have the majority votes on that committee.
And that's why, I'm sorry, that's why I said, you know, you know, five, seven, nine people type of, you know, you know, three or four on our side.
If we have nine, we should be five at least from our side, right? That's all I want to make sure of, we got to remember.
That's fine.
We're going to whip it up here, I'm going to count those votes.
Mr. Dusman?
I also, I, I think the town's recent experience with the police stations informed appear, from moment to moment, the town was mixing up solution with problem, and investigation of that problem. And I think, more than anything, that has played the development of that, and I'm not sure the town has escaped that problem yet. I think we ought to do our best to separate the, what happens with the plan from the developing of the understanding of the need part of the plan. It should be in the hands of consultants of expertise, who study building construction, they study delivery finance, they're studying educational use. So I, I would say that any conversations that take place with the big time and the select boards, uh, about who's going to be on a committee and what's going to have buy-in, are premature until we understand that the problem is, you know, a technical standpoint. Because I love this town, but as I've said many, many times, it is a town of forty thousand people, and sometimes thinks it only has fourteen thousand people. And the solutions of very, very big place are not quite as cozy sometimes, familiar with the fellows in the town and our leaders.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. So, moving forward for our joint meeting. And for, for the, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a jolly... For all the actual facilities master plan, you know, basically, I've had, I had a conversation with Mr. Kylie earlier, and at this point, it really involves a pre-K from Ron, that it would involve putting on an RFP, doing some interviews with some architects, and then bringing the architect in, doing the interviews, and then hiring, or why did they contract the architect? And then, uh, Mr. Kylie, and then, um, Mr. Ferrera will be, you know, collecting some data on that now, and then at some point, they'll report back with the, the findings of the committee of the, um, of the master plan. So, I don't know, I, I don't know where to go with this.
Can we just focus group? Can we include that in our, you know, that we need a focus group at town hall, we need a focus group with the finance committee, and so then that way there's, those, all those people are having input into the process, but they're not part of a committee to bog it down, bog down the professionals. So I, I think that way that also allows anyone who might have any expertise or interest to be able to come sit at the table, you know, you can open it up to maybe somewhat even community broadly, um, to do that and to provide some input into the process.
Okay. What are you doing?
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next up, athletic field.
Athletic field, so, um, we wanted to, this, this game was, uh, brought up by Mr. Cressman for the agenda, so, um, we are in the process of formulating our capital improvement plan. Will be brought to you with the school committee meeting. So, um, one of the things that I wanted to, one of the things, the, the only thing that did get forward in, uh, this last plan was stadium renovations. So, in preparation for this plan, I really wanted to gather some feedback from you folks as to how high of a priority, two things, I guess, how high of a priority the stadium renovation would be to you, and where you want to see it in the capital improvement plan. And then also, uh, I was thinking, there, there are a couple of ways to do this. When we originally brought it forward, we brought it forward as one big project, and the response that we got, the official response was that it would need to be a debt exclusion. There are ways to break this project into pieces that would make it more manageable, and time-wise, it may take longer, but could still end up with the same result, or even a better result, um, without having to look at a debt exclusion. So, um, if we looked at lights, turf, and general improvements to the stadium as pretty separate pieces, let's say, that may be something that we could break up into manageable chunks that, uh, may be more powerful in terms of the whole process, capital improvement process. So I just really wanted to get your thoughts on those two things.
Sure. What's the total cost, right now?
Well, we, right now, we had it at, we had it at one, we had it at one point two, and it may be a little higher than that, we've gotten, uh, we just got prices for LED lighting, replacement lighting, that's looking at about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The turf is probably going to be about eight hundred thousand dollars. And then, depending on what we do with the stadium itself, the stadium needs some attention, and, um, there are some ADA improvements that need to be made, there's, there's a number of things that need to be made, um, and there, that is probably scalable, you know, we could really look at doing it right, or just doing the bare minimum, and, you know, so that, that part of the project is the, the most variable cost.
I, I personally would love to see us go after the full amount in all, in one foot sweep, you know, because this is a project that is, yes, it's the school property, the stadium, but let's say it's the, the town uses the stadium, you know, it's the center of a lot of things that goes on in this town, a lot of youth groups that use it, not to mention the band that uses it quite frequently, quite frequently. Um, so ideally, I would love to see us take it in all one full swoop, but Mr. Kylie does bring up a very good point, as far as getting creative with funding it without having to even entertain, I wouldn't entertain a debt exclusion anyway, but, um, you know, without having to go after anything else by breaking, chunking the project up. So thoughts?
I think just to that point, one of the things about breaking it up is it would require collaboration with other groups in the town, that I think would advance the project much more quickly, that I think are appropriate, but might be hard for some groups to start.
What do you mean?
Uh, I think when we talk about ownership of, of the, of the property, if it belongs to the school, we are eligible for certain funding, it belongs to the town, we're going to have that. And I think we can enhance the facility, okay, through getting CPC funds or something like that, and that would be a more important goal than it is, uh, to decide who manages the use of it in the end, that gets really easy. But to Mr. Kylie's point about how important it is, the, the stadium is tangential, every other conversation we have, it's part of the master plan, it is part of facilities that would allow us to make a significant school hour change, because it would change resources and how, and where, and when we could use them. It is part of how the town funds recreation for this community, it's part of the mountain area itself, and of course, it's also part of the budget. So I think it may not be central to each of those issues, but it is definitely a tangential part of it, and it could be a solution to some of these things as well.
Mr. Dusman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, number one, first and foremost, we can't use CPA funds, preservation funds cannot be used by unofficial terms.
No, it can be used for the surface, I mean.
If that's all the reason that, you may get a little...
Yep, that's a discussion for, for number one. That stadium needs major work, there's someone who sits up, you know, both in the announcing type of deal, it's very difficult to see the item items, and God bless Allen Bradley for the work that he does on that field, other than that would be, uh, would be a total lump, and I, and I mean that in all seriousness, we don't realize the gem we have in Allen Bradley's work, and he does on that field keep it, uh, as good condition as it is, type of deal. A couple of, a couple, a couple of things that we could go about trying to fund, to fund this thing, uh, one of the things is, is maybe, you know, come May, if there's money left that hasn't been appropriated from free cash, or, or, you know, the town puts a chunk of that into stabilization plan, for a few improvements, you know, for five hundred thousand dollars, okay? You get to May of, uh, you know, you get into September, October of two thousand seventeen, FY eighteen, uh, and they've got some decent free cash, if they could put some more money into it, maybe enough to get it completed, so that in the course of a couple of years, we've got the money available to do it, and we haven't chucked it all in one fell swoop, or, then we can do everything in one swoop, I mean, to do the lights in either fields is going to take, you know, five or six months, so you're all stocking, uh, either no football or no spring sports there, I mean, even with frost, boys and girls in the frost, you're all sort of, you know, once the, the weather breaks April first, uh, sort of ripping everything up, if you haven't, haven't been able to get to a component to get it replaced, get the lights replaced, you know, the in-wiring, get the field down, things of that nature. The other thing I think we could possibly look at doing is with unofficial turf, you're then eligible to have other activities, you're able, you know, the MIAA, if you look all the tournament, once you get into the, the finals and such, there are always, you know, stadiums that have unofficial turf, so that everybody's on this level playing field. So we're not, we're not able to charge a fee to MIAA or any other group that wants to use that field, we put it into a revolving fund. Unofficial turf is going to last you ten, twelve, fourteen years, so by the time it comes to redo that field, there is hopefully a significant chunk of money available to replace it. So, those are my basic thoughts on it, I mean, again, as I said, as somebody that sits up there and, you know, everybody talks about it, and if you have...
I've got a bird's eye view.
I've got a bird's eye view, and, and even, not only me, but if you happen to watch the, I mean, I caught it the other day, the soccer game, I think it was, I'm not sure if it was the boys or girls that they were playing the pep talk or something, and even the, uh, the announcer happened to mention the fact, you know, when you get between the twenties and, you know, between the twenty yard lines, it's, it's torn up, so.
Thank you.
So... So, I mean, I think this has to be one of our highest priorities. I mean, we feel this is kind of an embarrassment right now, you know, and we need to do something about it. And, you know, while I like the maintenance idea, that means it's an embarrassment for another couple more years, and I, and I think it's about time, I think it's time we did it. And so, my preference would be to put it all in. We do significant amounts of capital in the town every year and we've been lucky that we've been supported, but, you know, other, other departments have as well, you know, I mean, GPW gets a significant amount of capital funding every year, other town departments, and so to Mr. Gar's point, this is not just a school thing. You go to the football games, it's not just, you know, parents that are there, there's people from all over the community, there are other organizations using it. So, I, I, you know, I think we need to remind people of that, that while it's a school capital request, it's really something that we all own and it needs to be a high priority for me.
Thank you. So, I think, that being said, Mr. Kylie, I think, I would say we're all in agreement that that should be, you know, based on, once you get the CIP together, that should be our top priority.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to talk about-
Right, so this will be quick one, hopefully. So, fuel efficient vehicle policy has been in place in town for a while. We have bought vehicles since it was originally in place. It doesn't apply to school buses, it doesn't apply to the vehicles that we use to block snow with, it doesn't apply, hasn't applied to special ed van transportation, because there's been no commercially available, available products that have met those requirements. So, the short of it is, it doesn't really apply to us under the current circumstance. Now, that could change and there could, and there may be vans, let's say, that would be available for, you know, for special ed use, special ed transportation that might meet those.
Presumably, we'd get money anytime, in the near future.
Yeah, well, right.
For vans.
Right. So, so it could change, so it could eventually impact us, right now it doesn't.
So, we have no vehicles that, okay.
I guess I'm amazed that there are no low mileage school buses, that, obviously, school buses by their nature aren't going to be dramatically low mileage, but one would think that's something someone should know.
It actually is based on the gross vehicle weight of, so there is, it's specific in the policy, there's a gross vehicle weight, school buses are way more, the vehicle weight, so they, they would be out right away, just like the big BMW trucks are out right away. Our trucks that we use for our maintenance guys, which we follow our snow with, need to be pretty heavy duty to get done what, yeah, what we need, so, so you can't, you can't have electric.
BMW doesn't make long-
Electric snowfall trucks, bro, that's not going to fly. So, it really doesn't apply to us, but I, I don't, no objection to the truck.
Thank you for your update, Mr. Kylie.
Thank you.
Dr. Giffrey.
Okay, just quickly, as you probably know, we, several of us attended the MAS, MAS conference last week. I just want to give a shout-out to our middle school team, Mr. Darren Doan and Richard Blair and Susan Tolson, who participated by presenting on PBIS at our middle school. So, we did a collaborative presentation with-
Melrose.
Melrose, thank you. Did the elementary version of what PBIS would look like and the middle school did the middle school presentation. So, that was all attending and it was really nice to see them there. Other than that, the conference had another theme of, once again, social emotional, building blocks of learning, and the urgency to include social emotional embedded into the curriculum, not just as an add-on. So, I think we're on the right track with that, you know, we really embrace that in our district. The elementary teachers, I just want to give another shout-out to Tracy, who's doing tremendous work across the board with many, many, many teams, literacy teams, math coaches, elementary teams, the CIAA team that we started last year, the Middle School Curriculum Instruction Assessment, has continued their work this year, and we talked about it today, the work they're doing to develop units of study, align curriculum across our elementary schools, I think is really, really, really doing, they're doing a fantastic job. And again, Tracy, all of this supervision, but the teachers are just all in the ooze, they, the science use they're developing, so I can't say enough about that. So, they had another PT last week, working with Lucy Clark in the model, conferencing and strategies, best strategies in the classroom. We had Unity Day in all the elementary schools, it's been crazy, unity, unifying and all that good stuff. People were dressed very strangely, but that's okay. And I also wanted to talk about, quickly, another of our students talked about the P N program, but our athletics, as you know, have done tremendously. Didn't just get a text that the volleyball team lost, so I hate to break that news, but they said it was a cold house and we were well represented, it was fantastic team. But other than that, just, you know, our boys soccer qualified for the state tournament, the cross-country, we're, we're old colony champs, the girls cross-country, we had several runners participate in self-section, field hockey didn't qualify for the state tournament this year, but had a great season. As you know, volleyball did a great job, and we just lost this past Friday. A girls soccer qualified for the state tournament and golf qualified for the state tournament, and of course, as we know, volleyball did, and then did lose tonight. So, you know, we've got some good academic stuff happening, band stuff, athletic stuff, you see the art program that's taking off and moving, so just a lot of good stuff happening.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Giffrey.
You're welcome.
Port of the chair, just a couple of things, I just see her out of the commentary, I have a big shout-out to Kathy Amaral and her counterpart that's not here this evening for the Community Resource Fair that I think was very well-attended and bigger than ever this year, so I think it went extremely well and I've heard a lot of nice things about it, so always looking forward to the following year. Thank you, and thank you, councilor, for your help. On another note, I don't know if you, any of you caught the Santa times yesterday, but there was a very nice article about the Gidley School in it by Suzanne Halliman. I thought that was very well-written. And just a little side note off of that, I was, I received an email, it was well bid the select board and some of the other town officials, from a former school department administrator, asking if there was going to be any kind of, you know, closing ceremony or some, something, something commemorating the Gidley School before it does get demolished. And to base that on the fact that it was kind of roughly closed, with no common circumstance, it was just the doors were kind of shut, shut down and that was that. So, I'm going to reach out to the select board, Mr. Kressman, because I know Mr. Kressman is also included in the event, to see if we maybe do, even though it isn't under our jurisdiction anymore, but, you know, I'll offer any support that I can from the school department, and maybe attend a little ceremony. One of the other things that we were talking about that got brought up was the idea of, this is actually Mr. McDonald that brought it up, selling, selling the bricks from Gidley School and having the proceeds go to the Adapted Education Foundation.
I have heard since from the Police Building Committee that we might want to check whether those bricks are safe to, before we do that, because we may lose money in the lawsuits that happen after we distribute them, so we need a little more investigation.
You may want to have it checked.
Yes.
But nonetheless, I think it's something I'll look into and see if we have something happen before February.
I, I think there are also some memorial things that are still on the property of the school that we should probably continue to look at and respectfully preserve, transport, renew, some options.
Right. I'm personally, Mr. Kylie, I would love to get a tour of the grounds.
I'd be happy to.
And then, I don't, yeah, you provide respiratory devices for it, or you-
I've been in there many times and had no issues.
Okay.
Yes.
But just to see what's on the grounds and all of that.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I, I have heard that, whether, the dedication stones that are around there and all that.
I'm not sure what kind of condition they're in, but I think that's something we might be able to answer before. My, my understanding from the select board is February is a loose time, that it's coming down, not a hard time.
So, other than that, continuing on our theme that our central office has started this year about You Matter, I have You Matter t-shirts for all of the school committee members. Dr. Jenkins?
If the sign is not right, take it up the jo.
Mr. Gar?
Take it up the jo.
Yeah, she figured it would, so.
And Mr. News.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
She can replace-
You Matter.
That's nice, thank you.
Very nice gesture. Thank you to the central office for providing those. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. News for his-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
... music department update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we last met back on the 28th of October, the band went down to Bridgeport, Connecticut for the US Band New England Finals, and we walked out of there with a 96.0, we had the high score for the night, so we are the New England champions and Massachusetts State champions in Division Five. The following day, we went up to Medfitt in Norrane to compete in the NESBA Championships for Division Five in this classic band association, and we walked out of there with a 98.9 and such. Last Saturday, by a long day, we went down to Bridgeport, Connecticut for the US Band's Regional Championships. We had the visual preliminaries in the afternoon and then go back, hang on, do finals at night type of deal. In the preliminaries, we took first place in Division Five, we ended up with best color guide, best music, best percussion, and then went back at night and took first place overall. Our score in the afternoon was 97.113, and then we went back at night and we got a 97.313 for first place overall, just the way the rotation with everyone did with 14 bands, and we ended up with best overall, best percussion and best visuals, so it's been a great season. As Stacy mentioned, we're headed to MetLife Stadium Saturday for US Band's National Championships, and hopefully they, they're going to win, will be able to continue the good season that they've had.
Thank you, Mr. News.
I promised not to text anybody until Sunday morning, because awards right now is going to go somewhere around midnight, give your guns on time, so.
Yes, Mr. News?
I'm not so quite a happy note. I would like to implore the people who are watching this, we were reminded in the last couple of weeks that students in the town of all different ages are moving from place to place to their own school. I know that it is getting darker in the afternoons now, I know there are a lot of people and there is a lot of construction out there, slow down. The extra minute that you save getting to work or getting to place to place is not worth the pain and suffering that the family goes through, not even worth the fear that the young child has to go through when they have to stand up in front of the school bus, awaiting the school bus, and they see a tractor truck come under their head or a 515 SUV. Slow down.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Our next regularly scheduled meeting is actually a joint meeting with the select board and the FinCon on November 14th, 2016. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into the executive session for the purposes with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel not to reconvene. So, what we-
Second.
Motion by Mr. News, second by Dr. Jenkins, on the motion, any discussions? Chair Young, roll call.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Omar?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, have a wonderful night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, have a Thanksgiving.